Our gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful we could come before this day. We're so thankful for the opportunity we have of being here this day in council. And bless us that we may strive to be wise and make good choices and good decisions for the future of Cardston. Help us that we may be able to be prepared and be accountable. We're so grateful for all we have. We know that all we have comes from you, as well as we pray in Jesus Christ.
Amen.
All right. If you want to put all your devices aloft.
Thanks so much, your counsel.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Today is the eleventh of December and we have a regular town council meeting. So we welcome the media Corey McCarthy and our Temple Star representative. It's wonderful to be there. Thank you. We have an agenda before you. And so if somebody wants to approve the agenda, go ahead.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Any additions that we should be aware of? No? Okay. All in favor? Thank you. So we now have a delegation and we want to welcome Glenda Farnand from Starz Foundation. And please come to the podium and note that you have about 15 minutes presentation. And then we will be there.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much. Well, it's great to see all of you. I've been here with a delegation to bring more information about landing zones in your area earlier on this year, so I did have a chance to meet you as well. Now, I do work with all municipal councils. My name is Glenda Farnand. I am the Senior Municipal Relations Liaison for Starz for Alberta and NBC. So for the past 12 years now, I have worked directly with municipal councils. So it's my pleasure to have this opportunity now to start working more regularly on an annual basis with yourselves as well. So there's been so many changes and things throughout the years. Since Starz just now, on December 1st, we celebrated 33 years of serving Albertans. And so going forward, there's going to be even more changes coming. But I think it's really important that we always remember where we came from. So this is kind of how I'd like to start. So in the beginning, this is Dr. Greg Powell, who is Starz founder. And at the time, he was the chief of emergency medicine at the Foothills Hospital. He came across some studies that showed that in Alberta, we had 50% higher trauma-related death rates than in any other province in Canada. This greatly disturbed him. But it took him back as well to some earlier memories when he was a young medical student and how he had the opportunity to actually visit a Vietnam mass unit. And if helicopter EMS was saving lives there, why could we not implement that into everyday life? So that was kind of the vision of Starz. So Starz was essentially born out of necessity. He gathered together a small group of his colleagues, physicians, nurses, paramedics, and then also reached out to some of the local businessmen that he knew. And essentially, they all shared that same life-saving vision. And so it was Lions of Alberta Foundation who actually provided the significant funding to lease this helicopter along with their volunteer physicians and nurses and paramedics. And then they would go to the mailbox every day to see if there was enough donations to put fuel in the helicopter. That's how we began. And then the fateful day, December 1st, 1985, Starz' very first mission for this young lady who was a critically ill newborn in southern rural Alberta. Little did we know with that first mission, how that was going to for future generations and years to come, that was going to radically change how critical care would be delivered to rural residents. Or should go back to, you know, so in the beginning, at that first year that followed, there was about 50 missions flown in that first year. Last year, we flew one mission short of 3,000 missions for last year. Oh, there goes the... Okay. So there may be firsts for Starz, we won't go through them all, but I really wanted to provide them for you if you wanted to read more. We have an incredible history for Starz. Lots of firsts. First in being that we were providing this type of service for Alberta, that we were recognized as an essential service by the provincial government. The fact that another base was established in Edmonton then in order to serve more Albertans. We started the calendar campaign and Starz Lottery, which are both still going today as financial support for the service. The fact that we have the Emergency Link Center that still today is the key asset in being able to coordinate dispatch and coordinate and work directly with 911 dispatch for the calls that come in. The Human Patient Simulator Program. Earlier this year, we actually had that program here in Cardston, working with your physicians and nurses and bringing critical care training to them. Night vision goggles. We were the first civilian air carrier in Canada that was actually, other than the military, allowed to fly at night and answer those calls for help at night as well. About 50% of our calls are at night. More bases to come. The fact that we were able to celebrate the 25 years of care in the air. Multiple affiliation agreements in place with multiple provincial governments. We have a 10-year agreement in place with Alberta Health Services, which is due to expire in 2020. So I assure you that we are having very high level of discussions with government right now. Followed by the fact that Winnipeg, we originally went to help them with their flood situation. And then the second time that they requested our help, they said, "We do not want you to leave. We will work with you to do whatever we need to do to have Starz services available to Manitoba." So we have a 10-year agreement in place with Manitoba Health as well. Followed by an agreement in place with Saskatchewan. Because they were kind of stuck in the middle saying, "Well, we want Starz services as well." So we just recently signed another agreement with Saskatchewan, or yes, Saskatchewan government for 10-year affiliation as well. Blood on board. We are the first in Canada to bring that life-saving measure right to the scene of an accident. We carry universal blood on board for every mission. And so we work very closely with Canadian Blood Institute in order to ensure that there is no waste. It is regularly, they come and pick it up if we haven't used it and it goes back into the system and they bring us fresh blood because blood does have an expiry date. So we're able to bring that life-saving measure right to the scene of an accident. And it is saving lives. We see the effects every day. So there's just so many different things in our incredible history. Currently, we're six bases across three provinces, Alberta, Saskatchewan, Manitoba, serving four provinces when we include Eastern BC, North and South. We average eight missions per day and we have 11 helicopters in the fleet. And we're very close to surpassing 40,000 missions flown since that first fateful day. We also have, there is an international critical care training competition each year. And we host our own internal competition to allow every one of our crew members to compete against each other, only allowing one team of two to represent Starz internationally at this competition each year. We've participated 16 years now. We have placed every single year we have participated. And we have brought the cup home six times and once again this year. So that is in itself a testament that we are able to provide to Albertans the highest level of critical care, especially for the rural areas. So when I work with municipalities each year, I bring this exact same scenario slide so that you can look back and compare, see where we're at each year. So on expenditure side, it pretty much has stayed status quo for many years now. Two-thirds of the pie take up aviation and medical components. The smaller pieces continue to be base operations, dispatch and coordination, and administration costs. You'll see that we are at 15% for administration costs. Please keep in mind that is well below the CRA allowable of 35%. On the funding side, we received block funding for that affiliation agreement from Alberta Health Services. This is in thousands, so it's just roughly over $7 million a year block funding, which leaves us 82% to be fundraised. Of that 82%, Starz Lottery continues to be our single largest funding source. Previously, a year ago, we had netted a little over $12 million from the lottery. This year, only a little over 10. That has hurt us. But the last three years in general have been difficult for everyone, whether it's individual, municipalities, oil and gas, all of those sectors. We have all suffered some hard times. And so that is reflected in our funding sources as well. Not only for the lottery, because people can't afford to buy as many tickets as they normally would have. The calendar campaign seems to always hold its own, it just roughly over $1 million. They keep saying that there may be a threat of calendars being phased out. People don't use them very much anymore. But people still want to support and they want to see those patient stories. So it holds its own still at just over $1 million per year. Side registration has been down as well for the last three years. But again, industry largely uses the permanent side registration program that we have, you know, to be able to have that direct link to Starz in any kind of trauma incident. So less sites have been registered, especially through oil and gas. But it is starting to rise, so it is up and coming. But that is our single only funding source, revenue generating funding source. So within Cardston County, I want to give you a good idea of what's happening within your area. It's important to remember though that we all travel. We all, whether it's for work or for play, like we all travel in the neighboring municipalities as well. So there may be some, you know, if you're seeing calls or even facility transfers, maybe a neighboring member of your neighboring municipality and vice versa. There may be some Cardston missions in Pinter Creek or Lethbridge area, you know, because we all do travel. So it's very much a united effort. You can see that you have a very busy hospital here in Cardston that requires some critical care transfers. Now, 2017, I'm wondering whether or not you may have had new physicians in place where they did not have the information, you know, on how to contact Starz or maybe that it was not available. Because once in January, when we came and brought the critical care training to your hospital, then all of a sudden, the missions were happening again and we were able to assist your hospital, as you can see, for six missions in 2018. So I'm not sure if there may have been, but we have seen that in other rural communities where they will get locums in, they will get other new doctors in. They don't have that information. And once we go and visit with them again, then it reflects in the statistics. So overall, if we're looking just at town of Cardston and for your immediate area scene calls, then you're seeing an average of about six, as you can see across the board, there are about six missions per year. Kind of give you an idea, if we were talking dollar value of just mission-related costs, then this would represent over about over $40,000 worth of service per year to your town and your area from Starz. We have deliberated for many, many years over when would the day come when we would have to really start looking at fleet replacement. And it's come to that fact now that over the last, say, five or six years, it has become more and more apparent. But now this year, early on, we found an instance where, you know, with the BK-117s, they're all approaching 35 years old. We maintain them meticulously, but at the same time, it's just like a vehicle or anything else. It gets to a point in time where now BKs have been phased out of production. We're finding difficulty in getting parts. It's starting to be more costly to maintain in order to get those parts. So we have made the decision to go back to a unified fleet. That means one type of helicopter, just like we started. It is the most economical in many ways as far as certification, licensing, your mechanics that are required, the training, like it just goes on and on and on. When you try to have two different types, it is extremely costly. And we did learn that lesson. So we are going back to a unified fleet. We're going to purchase three in the beginning of these Airbus H145s using some cash reserves and some financing. They are about $13 million per helicopter. The final goal over the, hopefully, the next five to six years of a campaign is a total of nine, five for Alberta, three in Saskatchewan and one in Manitoba. So Albertans, we will be reaching out to every Albertan as far as trying to find money to have five helicopters in Alberta. So that's one at each base, Grand Prairie, Edmonton and Calgary, with two backup helicopters to be rotated as needed for scheduled maintenance or anything unforeseen. All three of the provinces will be kept separate. Any fundraising, any government support, any municipal government support, will all be separate. So Saskatchewan government, just recently, when they signed their 10-year agreement in place, this was just as of last week, they also did announce that they will provide the dollars for one helicopter in Saskatchewan. So we are going to try and build one, the fleet, one helicopter at a time for Alberta. As we raise the money, then we will purchase.
Can I ask you something?
Yes.
Has the Alberta government been approached in order to purchase one?
Certainly, that's where I said, you know, because the affiliation agreement is also coming up due in 2020. We are in very high level discussions with the highest level of government as to, you know, where they find themselves and how they will be able to support us and whether or not there is an appetite that they can help with helicopters in Alberta.
Well, if it helps save lives, can there not be an appetite?
We would hope so. One would hope. But, you know, like I said, we have to acknowledge that Alberta Health Services is our largest single donor. And so we are in partnership to save lives and going forward, you know, we hope that we both have the same vision and the same plan as, you know, our population is aging and there's increased opportunity to be assisting, especially in critical care.
Thank you.
So I want to thank you very much for this opportunity to bring you more information. I really look forward to working more closely with your council on an annual basis as well. If you were to consider, we would like to ask for a request for your consideration to join other neighboring municipalities across the province that are a part of our municipal initiative program. So most municipalities are participating on a per capita basis. And that ranges anywhere from some villages and smaller towns like yourself, say a dollar to $2 per capita, up to, we have larger municipalities are giving up in excess of $65 per capita.
So I'm glad you're addressing the topic. It's an important one, of course. And so in your request here, it talks about $2 per capita.
Yes.
So you just talked about a bracket from a $1 to $2. So that will be up to each council to kind of decide within their budgetary abilities.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. That's some point that I wanted to make clear.
Well, I want to bring you as much information as possible.
Appreciate that.
The range is for the majority, let's say the absolute majority, is from $2 to $65 and everything in between.
Okay.
We have some areas that it just does not fit well within their budget at all at this time. You know, we have some that are doing incremental, they have a plan, like on a graduated plan to get to that $2, so they may increase us, you know, 50 cents here or 25 cents here, whatever, to work towards that. The most important thing that I would like to instill upon you is that it's about a partnership. It's about us all working together and doing something that is, you know, is for all of us. We are very fortunate as Albertans, we have the opportunity and the access to Starz. Anywhere we go in Western Canada, if you're visiting family in Manitoba, you still have access to Starz and at no cost to you if you are flown.
Can I ask another question? Last time when you came, they asked him last about a new pad for your helicopter. And so is this no longer an issue?
We had discussions and I did thank you for bringing that up because I was wanting to ask you as well. We had some discussions. It was more so about the fact that we would just like to find a more co-located to your hospital landing area than the airport. Not only because of distance, road as well, because it's not ideal for a trauma type of patient and so all those different factors. So I know that there was some initial discussion that we might have an opportunity with yourselves, maybe if you could talk with the blood tribe.
We did and that land is absolutely not for taken.
Okay, so there's no chance of a landing site there? Even just as grassed area?
Zero chance.
Zero chance? Well, that shoots that down because that would have been ideal to just cross the highway and still be very conveniently located, you know. And your other area, of course, Transport Canada deemed that we can no longer land there and that's out of our jurisdiction.
So here's another question for you. Is that a possibility if there was an emergency and the need to be next to the hospital to land on the highway if it was blocked on both sides?
So here's the table about that. Transport Canada governs where we can land. Basically, for life-saving measures, we can land anywhere for life-saving measures one time. Once it starts to become a habit or looks like that is the same spot, then they come in and stop that. And we've seen that happen a couple of times at some other rural communities. And they say that you have to have a certified or a registered landing site.
All right. Appreciate that. Counselor Bank, don't go wrong.
One of the biggest problems we have with relocation of a pad is Transport Canada authorizing the use of that area and significantly flagging that area for a helicopter landing pad. And there's quite an expensive one and quite a bit of paperwork. And it's an involved process.
Yes.
And so that's why we opt out with the airport. It's already designated site. It's got all the clearances, it's got all the markers, everything like that.
Yes.
Counselor Brown, you wanted to address something?
Previous to you guys coming last time, we gave the airport money to go towards a building so that we would have a building there for when Starz ambulance came. So we spent money on that. And then you guys came and said, "Well, that's not ideal." But the key here is it can be used, correct? And like tomorrow, if we needed it, you can go there. It's just not ideal.
That's right.
And the ideal property, we can't give you because it's not ideal for where we're at. Yeah, okay.
So, and one understood, like, I think, you know, originally that looked like a possibility and of course you want to check every avenue available because we could have made that work better. Now that that's off the table, then yes, we will continue. And I think that, you know, for the amount of missions, you know, when you try to weigh everything, for the amount of missions that come to this area and versus the cost, then I think we need to still stay with that is the plan until maybe a later date. You never know what else might present itself that might be a fairly, even a little bit closer proximity. Like we need to work together to keep our eyes open. But certainly, yes, we will continue to serve your area and land at the airport, which is more why we're looking at the fact that, is it a possibility? Would you be interested to be a part of our municipal initiative and be a partner and help us to offset some of those costs?
But just on that, on that same thing is, the trick is though, as a town, we only have so much money. And so are we going to build you a new pad? Or are we going to give you more money to go, to do more flights, right? I mean, we have to look at it that way.
Certainly.
That's the key, right?
Yes.
Because it is about saving lives. And if we have to go out on the highway versus somewhere else, we will save a life. We just have to be aware of where we're spending. Where's the most important way to spend the money, I guess, for us?
No, I fully agree. And I'm just saying, I'm confirming that.
Yeah, for sure.
For the amount of missions, it's probably not really feasible that you should be looking at building a pad.
Okay, Brenda, I think we have one last question and then we'll let you go. Thank you.
Glenda, can you tell me a basic size of an area that you require for a landing pad?
I don't have it on top of my head. Normally, just in layman's terms, kind of a hundred by hundred, I think, meters, like somewhere where you could spin a school bus.
But it also had to do with the wind, the direction of the wind, what's around it, et cetera?
As long as, yes, there's no high trees or...
Obstructions, houses, whatever.
You know?
Okay.
So is that site west of town?
Can we?
Is it not available anymore?
All right. So we'll discuss that afterwards. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your time. I totally appreciate your consideration.
We will have our administration contact you regarding our discussion, no matter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Administration has my contact information. Please keep us informed if you find other sites.
Don't worry, we will.
We would like to work with you.
Thank you. All right, we have the minutes of November 27th. Counselor Stone?
I have one question on the minutes. Carson Rotary Club, they were looking for a rat, it was supposed to be coming in. Did we ever hear about that?
They do not have the answer right now. They should have the answer coming.
Before the end of December?
Yes, that's what I told us.
What? I thought it was like the 15th or the 16th.
Yes, it should be pretty soon, mid-month, I think, they're supposed to have the answer.
I think that was planned for December.
No. Okay. So we have a motion to approve the amendments. All in favor? Thank you very much. So let's go to 6B right now, since Jeff is on there. It's bylaw 1649E. As you can see, it's an amendment to the distribution access term by law amendment. And it's a necessary amendment that needs to be done because of the changes that ISO is making. So what we need, we need to, it has no effect on the citizens at all. We need to do three readings, but so you will need to allow for the third one.
I move first reading of bylaw 1649E, distribution access term by law.
Okay, any question regarding that? All in favor? Thank you.
Second reading, motion, second reading on 1649E, distribution access term.
Bylaw amendment.
Yep. I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I should have asked the question before. So this here, the November amendment has a rate of, was it 3.53 cents? And it's higher than what the original proposed rate was? What's that?
Yeah, no problem. So when you approved in November, it had the 0.000353 per kilowatt hour. The proposed rate now, thrice, was a little bit lower. So what you would be approving tonight actually will reduce the costs for users. I mean, we're talking minuscule amounts here. We're at thousandths of cents per kilowatt hour, but it is a smaller bouncing pool rider.
Okay, all right. Let's add answer your question. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you.
Do we still allow for a reading?
Okay. All in favor? Thank you. So Counselor Brown, you wanted to do the...
Oh, I want you to have your hand up. Oh, yeah, I can.
Okay, go ahead.
So I can move the... Move third reading of bylaw 1649E, electricity distribution by law amendment.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. You know, since we are with a bylaw before the budget, let's do 6C. Utility rate by law amendment.
Don't we explain that quickly?
Yeah, please, Jeff, go ahead. And then there again, we need to do the reading. It does not have any effect. It does not have any effect.
Yeah, so this is just to tidy up. You may remember last month, you approved the Distribution Access Tariff Bylaw and we moved the connection fees for electrical into that bylaw. So now we have two bylaws with two different connection fees. So I'm requesting that we remove the connection fees. That's the only change in the utility rate bylaw is the removal of the electrical connection fees and their associated notes.
Okay. Peter, Counselor Jones?
Make a motion to approve third reading.
No, go ahead. To approve Utility Rate Bylaw Amendment, first reading.
First reading. Bylaw 1582E, Utility Rate Bylaw.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Now I need Counselor Barnes.
I move second reading, Bylaw 1582E, Utility Rate Bylaw Amendment.
Okay. So no questions? All in favor? Thank you. So go ahead.
Allow third reading of Bylaw 1582E, Utility Rate Bylaw Amendment.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. So now Counselor Cole?
Move third reading for Bylaw 1582E, Utility Rate Bylaw Amendment.
Thank you. All in favor? So as I said, it does not affect the consumer. So Jeff is now going to go and present 2019 budget. That is a third review. He just gave you a spreadsheet to help you.
We'll start with this one with the columns down, the colored columns.
And we're coming very close to being a final, first final document.
Yeah. So am I good to go, Mayor?
Please go ahead.
So Counselor, you will notice that we are looking at the December 11th, 2018 updates. You will also notice there's very few. We haven't changed much since November. In fact, we've changed nothing on the capital side. We were pretty content with what we needed to do by November. We had our numbers in, we had our quotes in, and so we haven't had to change much. So I have a few things I wanted to point out, maybe just for interest and information. But as always, any items are on the table for discussion.
Jeff, just so that you keep it in mind whenever you come through it. Counselor Bankery just told me a few minutes ago that Oss is looking at a 15% increase.
No, 1.5.
Oh, you had me talking.
Yeah, 1.5 decimal points important.
I was thinking 15%, I have to panic on that. I'm glad there was a dot because that wakes my heartbeat to a normal.
I was accounting for 1.5, but not 15, nine decimal point place.
Okay, all right. So you knew that it's already in the budget?
Yes, it's funny.
Oh, yeah, because I was thinking, oh, my ear is just crazy.
So if any of you scrolled through this on your devices, we haven't made any changes since Friday evening. So there's nothing that will be different on there?
Call Starz ambulance for us.
Go let me back.
I need my glasses. His glasses look better.
The first item is on page two. And actually, this is a little bit, I'll be honest, we're going to discuss this in the closed session. Why it's different? But we have it reflected in the budget because we're anticipating the change. So I'll talk to you folks about that a little bit further in the closed session when we talk about the campground contract.
Okay.
If you go to the bottom of page three, that's where we increased council fees and per diems to compensate for the loss of the non-taxable portion. And we're going to talk about that shortly here as well.
Jeff, we, back to the concessions at the pool?
Yeah.
We got a 2% increase thereafter?
Well, all that was last month, we just went according to the actuals of 2018. It just pulled it down $500. We don't, I'm cautious about overstating our anticipated income because it's just as damaging as being over budget on the expense side as overstating income and not receiving it. So I'm cautious about that. Even though it's only $500, we still need the change.
Thank you.
Because, yeah, it affects you the same. So the council fee per diem is up 12%. Now, when we go over the policy here shortly, I'll show you some of the numbers. We rounded up so it's not exactly 12, but we feel we can capture what we've proposed in the policy with this number. So we can talk about that a little bit more. That's the only change on page three. Page four, we didn't change anything since November. Page five, we added the victim services annually through the three-year budget, as per their presentation last meeting. And actually, you go all the way to page eight until there's another change since last month. Now, this one I want to talk about a little bit because it should spur some thoughts and questions. We went through any per capita requisitions we pay and adjusted them because we've increased our population because of the census. And so we have since increased any population-based requisitions. Now, the question is, where's the offsetting income from the higher population? And I'll talk about that actually when we get into capital because it impacts that MSI capital grant.
Yeah.
Just a comment here. Just so you know, Jeff, that Chief Mountain Regional Solid East hasn't factored those numbers in. They're using our.
Okay, well then.
I'm wondering if I should keep my mouth shut.
2018, at the start of the year, as far as the province was concerned, we were at the lower number. So we may be okay.
We're projecting in 2019 the same thing, 2585.
So no, you don't trust.
Well, to be fair, well, I'll say this really carefully. Raymond McGrath and Sterling all held their lower provincial numbers for a number of years and didn't talk about their census. So maybe what's good for the goose is good for the gander there.
I was thinking I was being disingenuous because I was going to point out that the numbers that they are using for Raymond McGrath are lower as well.
Yeah, so.
Well, it has to be up to that board to decide which number to do. If they use a lower number, same is true for the two other and you will see to it. Higher, same for the other.
Yeah.
So I have my marching orders from the mayor.
Sounds like it, yeah, sure it sounds like it. So I'll talk about the, I want to talk on the capital side about how that's affecting MSI and what we're doing with it. But we do anticipate an increase on the capital funding side from that census change. I didn't have anything again, and I'll again say, anytime you want to jump in, by all means.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Sorry, page nine.
Yep.
251, 789.
Yes.
Do we have that?
So we use, it's carefully worded, but that is our bylaw, Ryan, who we have now.
Should we change the wording maybe?
FCSS doesn't like it if we change it.
But that's not who he is.
He's playing a bit of that Horton role. So we've kept it there. The intent of that position is that that position is looking to intervene with folks on the street prior to them having to interact with law enforcement. That's the intent. And we could have a good discussion about whether we feel that's still the intent. That's what we've asked Ryan to do. We asked him to go down and say, look, I'm watching you do this. If you don't stop, I have to call the RCs, I have to call a police officer. We don't want to have to do that. So the intent of it was to keep law enforcement and some of those folks on the street not having to have negative interaction. That's the intention. Yeah, but good question because it is an oddly worded category.
Right?
Yep.
Yeah.
I won't argue that with you at all.
Thank you.
Yeah. Page 11, we have two categories. They're both small and one we'll talk about with the campground contract in the closed session. Again, it's just the offset of the increase in the contract. And then we took $5,000 out of 2019 for elm scale treatment. The Arbus has been in town the last little while looking at things and they actually do not want to treat annually. They want to look at it at least every other year. They don't feel, they feel it's more damaging that they don't want to be doing that every year. And they want to monitor it a little bit better over the year. So they've asked, they told us not to budget anything for that next year. And they're going to look at that for 2020. So again, these are fairly small, but changes we've made since November. Page 12, two-thirds of the way down under the civic center. This is just getting the actual, we had some money in here. The stage curtains, the window curtains and some of the carpets, they're deteriorating. Like the chains falling out of the bottom of the stage curtain. It's just getting brittle and old and so we've got a quote, we've got two, another one coming in. They came yesterday to give us another quote, but we have a quote on replacing those and that's what that represents.
The whole curtain?
Yeah, all the window curtains and the stage curtains. They are, the fabric is deteriorating on the bottom and falling apart. So I can't imagine how old they are. They're forever, I think, since the place was built for a stage, so. Yeah.
Jeff, we took out the first replacement for this building last year.
So we did a council contingency funding to pay for that within this year. Yeah, and it's down there. It's almost plumbed. It's getting close. It's getting close. Thankfully, the weather has been relatively forgiving. So we've been okay.
Still been like a couple of good weeks, it looks like.
Yeah, we've been okay. So we think they're just a few days away. The next change was on the bottom of 13 and again, it's those census changes, both at Chinook Arch. Oh, sorry, sorry, the first one is a census change with Chinook Arch. The second is council, you'll be ratifying a motion, a recommendation from CCW to ask the library to bring their requisition down. Quick update on that. And Counselor Barnes, you may be able to speak to this more thoroughly, but I talked with Donna. They weren't able to convene a meeting, but they called Mr. Quentin, the chair, and Donna, and they assured us they could get to that number.
Yeah, I talked with them the Wednesday morning after we discussed it then. And they, Mr. Quentin assured me that they could, they could work with that too. And so we just have to let them know that our budget for the next four years is set and that they have to work within that. And if you want me to take that message to them to the next meeting, I'd be more happy to.
So just so you know too, in case Donna didn't tell you, I sent them that spreadsheet I gave you with the historical changes and their projections through 2021 and just said, this is what council's considering and you can look at over that time. You know, we're looking at 54% increase, we're looking at significant. And this is what I gave them. So I gave her all the background so there's no surprises. So they should be fairly.
They will be bringing it up by November.
Yeah, okay.
And I'll just reiterate.
So we tweaked it to go down to the number you requested plus a 2% each year.
Yeah.
That's how we adjusted it. So that knocked it down a few thousand dollars. And then the last operational number on number 14 is just an adjustment to your major utility capital. And this is an account we use to kind of balance. So if we found a few pieces of savings, that number goes up. If we found a few expenses, that number goes down. And so it's still projecting $105,000 major utility capital reserve and $86,000 equipment reserve for public works and you can see the others that haven't changed. So council, five years, four or five years ago, wanted us to be around $150,000 rolling average. We're continuing to be really close to that. And we didn't make any changes in the capital budget since last month. But for a little bit more detail, you have this other spreadsheet. And I just wanted to touch on really just a couple of things because I've been looking at how this census affects our ability to fund. Now, huge caveat, we don't know what MSI 2.0 looks like. So all things being equal, keep that in mind as I explain how that might have worked. If you look at the first page, how these sheets all work is you have all the projects we plan on doing in capital, what their cost will be, and then as you go across, it's how will we fund them? Where are we pulling from? And so if you look under MSI, the top number says 482,000. What that's saying is, and in fact, Hocken needs to change that to say 19, but we have carry forward of MSI from previous years of 482,000 that we're bringing forward to fund stuff in 2019. We anticipate that we will receive $805,000 from MSI. And so those two numbers fund everything below MSI, leaving us with, we anticipate carrying forward $377,000 into 2020. Now, what we have not factored yet is what will the census change do on that number? So our hope is when we get our 2019 MSI, it's somewhere around, we factored about, what did we figure? It should be about $18,000 to $20,000 higher. I think we were looking at about $60 per capita benefit when we looked at doing the census. So we're hoping that we see, you know, a decent number there, that it's not 805, it's 830. And then what we'll do is that will add to what we're going to have to be carried forward to 2020. Hocken and I have intentionally carried some money forward the last few years. So the reason is, is that we know that you have some ambitious projects on the horizon and we're trying to have some 50 cent dollars available. Like we want to be able to say next year that if we're looking for a large grant, we've got $500,000 in MSI to carry forward, that we can assign to that as an example, so that we can match. So we have been using some reserves, we've been using some tax funding, we've been trying to maintain what we can. The other thing that we're concerned about even more distinctly is what if MSI 2.0 drops our annual from 805 to 605? What if that's what happens? Well, now we have some money to kind of hedge that over a couple of years, if that's what council chooses to do with it. You'll have that option at the time. But we would have an option to say, well, let's take $100,000 from our carry forward and supplement the 600 or whatever that number will be. So you have some options in some MSI funding.
Thanks so much for those reserves, by the way.
Yeah, your reserves are growing nicely.
That is really good to see.
And then if you, if you want to look through, if you flip the page over at the end of, say, 2020, we anticipate there being $457,000 in MSI and then by 2021, $537,000. We have relative surety of MSI through 2021. And I say relative surety because we have an election next year. So I have no idea what they're going to do.
They want to buy some votes.
Yeah, I don't know. But you also buy the votes in the year of the election and you don't buy them in the next year. So I don't know what 2020 will look like. I have no idea. Counselor Bankery?
Jeff, I noticed there's a lot of replacement of half tons and so forth. What determines the replacement factor?
Just general condition. I mean, like you see, one of those is a 1988. It's still around, but it's time.
Bylaw, UCUs or.
Yeah, Malcolm would drive it around.
There's an F250 or an F150, Ford 250, a water place.
Yeah, so buying the three-quarter ton to replace the half ton, yeah.
Yeah. Now, how far does that go during the day? What does it do?
I can't speak to that exact unit. I don't know.
See, I think we need to look at the priorities of what these units, if they're moving around and doing a whole lot of work during the day and through the week. But if they're just sitting there waiting to be used, we need to look at that too.
We have very few idle vehicles. We just, we don't have excess vehicles. We have a few old ones for the summer kids that they drive around. And that was where you would see that 1988 isn't being replaced by a new truck. It's being replaced by something for 10 grand.
Now also, you've got golf carts, 727. How many does that amount?
To be determined. So we mentioned last time, what the plan is, is we're intending to spend $300,000 on equipment at that golf course. We know there's a couple of pieces that must be done. We know there's a couple of mores that simply have to, and that'll be about 200,000, about 220,000 odd. And then we will prioritize the rest, but we know we probably need to swap out 15 carts.
Is this a recommendation from the committee?
Yeah, the committee's seen equipment replacement schedule. So what we don't know yet on this is we don't know exactly how this is going to look, whether it's going to be like an eight-month lease from a manufacturer, equipment manufacturer, whether it's going to be conventional borrowing and then just outright purchase. But we've amortized it in the operational side of the golf course over five years. So we're not, we're not budgeting for, I know you see a $300,000 expense there, but there's also a $300,000 borrowing on the income side of capital. And then we anticipate the 60-some thousand dollar payment every year out of the golf course expenses.
I just wondered, Jeff, is there a lease option in any of this at all?
There always is. There's a couple of downsides to leases for municipalities. One is your interest rates are normally higher than what we can borrow for. So we could probably borrow on a five-year for just north of 2%. You won't get a lease for that. You're going to pay 6, 7% on a lease. And the other thing is as a non-taxable entity, we don't, leases are a deductible expense to a business. We don't need it. So there's, most of the time, we're actually financially better off just to go borrow and buy and then amortize it out because we don't need the depreciation, the lease expenses as a. because we don't need the depreciation, the lease expense as a, as a tax deduction.
Jeff? Jeff? To go away from that, but to go more on the operational side.
Yeah.
These STARS requirements
Yeah.
had, might have to become a factor
Yeah.
for changes one more time.
So we haven't considered it in this budget?
No, so that's what I think, once we have the discussion, we will agree on a figure if that's the desire of council. And then we might have to plug in another $4,000 bucks.
So you have a couple of options at this stage. Well, and, and actually, I think we talked about this last year, but let me hit on it again. As a council, tonight, one way or another, you have to pass a budget. You don't have to pass this one. So you can say, no, we got some problems with it, we want to tweak a few things, we're not quite comfortable. That's totally fine. What we do is we pass an interim budget, and what the act says is we operate on 2018's operational funding. We don't spend anything on capital, but we take 2018's operational costs, we can pay the lay bills and pay all the bills, you know, and then we get something in place. However, with, say, this, this request that was just before me, you have a couple of options. You could delay a decision until mail rate time.
Okay.
So you could say, look, we appreciate it, we're going to talk about it in April, we're going to look at a few things then. Or you have council-approved operating dollars that you could draw from by resolution at any time. It doesn't have to be a budget time, any time. We can do it in January, and you can draw from there.
Okay, so that's
You have some options.
Answer my questions. Now councillor Drew, councillor Barnes, councillor Barnes first, councillor Drew.
So this might not be the proper time to ask this question, but I did get a phone call about a week ago from a fellow from Lethbridge who regularly brings a group of golfers down here to Cartson because he says that this is the best golf course anywhere. But he was wondering, and I don't, that's why actually I don't know if this is the right time, whether the groomer on these mowers for the, for the greens could be tighter, he says, because they're slow greens.
No idea.
And I was wondering, who would be the fellow you talked to? Now, is it going to be?
Well, I don't have a superintendent, of course.
No, I realize that, but Alex is going to be the new rec guy. Is he kind of going to be the go-to guy for a bit?
Yeah, he will, and again, we
Chat with him about that?
We intend to have a superintendent in place first of the year. We're going to be advertising for it soon, so I, I simply don't know the answer.
Yeah, because I know the fellow said that if the greens were just a quarter of an inch or so shorter, they would be really super greens.
We'll make a note of this.
Please do.
Councillor?
So just a question about pulling our reserves for the payment of STARS. Does that affect our 2019 budget, or does that just come out of?
So you've got a $50,000 pocket of council-approved operating at your discretion, and it's budgeted and it's planned for. So you would simply have a resolution that would say, we want to do this unbudgeted expense and fund it here, and we reduce that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councillor else?
Jeff, I got to back the budget train up just a bit here. This rehabilitation grant, the DRP?
Yes. We're getting close.
If we get, if we don't get the money?
Yeah.
Are we on the hook?
Well, so
Are we already paid yet?
Yeah, everything is paid. All the contractors are paid, the project is fully paid. If we do not get the money... Now, by the way, that moved along really well today, as an aside. We had a lot of great, well, I shouldn't say great. I'm much more optimistic right now than I was at 8:30 this morning about how DRP was moving along. So everyone's paid. We have a line of credit that we are financing the difference from what they forwarded us originally to finish the project. We, we'd be looking at a couple of things. If I know by the end of the year, if we knew by the end of the year, we either are getting it all, which is still my hope, or there's a little bit left unfunded, we have to have a discussion about how are we paying that last little bit? Are we... Well, frankly, it's paid, we've cash flowed it with other stuff.
It's how we replenish it.
It's how do we replenish that funding? And so you would need to frankly tax for it. Or we have, we have accumulated MSI, for example. So we could take it from there. We have it on the books as a receivable. And so again, as a non-taxable entity, if I was a private sector and I had a receivable I knew I wasn't going to get, it's now a write-off for me. I save the tax on that amount in offlane income in the next year. Doesn't matter for us, we're not taxable anyway. But we have to show our auditor how we're going to manage that because we have to, we took it from somewhere, we robbed Peter somewhere to pay Paul, and we have to make it up, right?
It was a gift from robbery too, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, it was. It was significant. Like I said, as of right now, I feel better, we're, I probably can be fairly public with this. On all that total, I think we're getting to be within about $40,000 of being done.
Okay, well, that's
Right?
That's about it.
Like, that's where I'm, as of this morning, we're arguing over about that amount of money and receipts and timelines, and we're, we're really willing... Hockin was in most today just working on that with the province. And I'm with you, I, if I walk away and have to lick my wounds on 40-some-thousand on the 1.2 million?
Yeah.
I'm probably fairly okay. And we'll figure that out. So it's coming, it's coming along.
But I mean, we learned plenty of good lessons in the, in the doing.
Yeah, we did. I probably wouldn't take it lying out if we got shorted any. I think there'd still be a bit of a political piece here, but I would cash their check first and then mount a political piece.
Difficult to trust a government that says, go ahead and then tells you, by the way, by the way, we want the money back. Not very good. Anyways, thank you so much, Jeff. So councillor, here is your opportunity to approve this budget today so that we carry on and move on on a clean slate moving forward.
Now, the motion for that, if you're open to it, is prescribed. It's in the policy. So in your RFD document at the bottom, we have it typed out how, if you're okay with it, it should be mentioned.
So first of all, let me know if you are okay with going ahead and approving this budget. To me, it is a conservative budget, there is reserve, and we are doing fine.
Mayor? And I approve that the 2019 operating and capital budgets be adopted as presented, that the 2020 and 2021 operating and the 2020 to 2023 capital budgets be approved as presented in principle.
Yeah. You need to approve the first years and then
A lot of 20s there, sorry.
Make a recommendation for the rest. Okay, so the motion is on the table, all in favor? Thank you. Thank you so much.
Also, thank you, councillor.
Big thanks to all your, your working partners
Yeah.
in establishing this budget, it's quite remarkable.
Mayor, your timing's actually pretty good. Jill has dinner, are you ready? Jill is 100% ready for dinner, if you want to.
Well, so we're going to enjoy our Christmas dinner baked by the staff and our media.
It's Jill.
Corinne and Jill, well, that's, that's the staff. Corinne and Bill, please join us. All in favor? Thank you.
Shall we list the foods?
It's next Tuesday.
Did we have a motion on the table? Okay, let's make a proper motion, then make a proper motion, councillor Benbury.
Make a motion that we recess for lunch.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you, there we go. And would you like to offer?